All right, good evening. Welcome to the November 12th Planning Board Meeting. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, first on the agenda is public comments. Does anybody have anything to say about anything that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, I will close the public comments. Next is view and approval of minutes. First, the minutes of September 10th, 2013.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2013 Board Meeting, with corrections if necessary.
Motion's made in seconded, any discussion? No discussion? Hearing nothing? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes, thank you. Next on the minutes of the October 8th, 2013 meeting. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 8th, 2013 Planning Board Meeting Minutes, with corrections if necessary.
Motion's made in seconded, any discussion on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Yes. All right, thank you.
I was absent for one of these meetings, I'm trying to figure out what you want.
You're gonna abstain from one?
Mr. Chairman.
The one I wasn't asked.
Yes.
I spoke with Councilor Wright this evening, and he has a conflict with the town council.
Yes.
They're having a budget meeting upstairs, so he will not be able to join us.
So I need to appoint?
No, because no one can appoint.
Oh, he has to have the substitute, or that's it, yeah. Ex officio.
Yeah, ex officio.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that.
All righty.
And Mrs. Rosen is here.
Miss, on time.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is the Rockingham Country Club. I don't know if all the board members know, late this afternoon, Ms. Hardy got a letter requesting an extension to December 10th Planning Board Meeting. So, having said that, I would accept a motion for continue to December 10th.
Make a motion to continue the Rockingham Country Club Inc. slash Chinburg Building Inc. of a public hearing for an application for subdivision on the residential open space design and for a special use permit at 200 Exeter Road, tax map, Row 3, Lot 23, M4 Zone.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Next on the agenda is David Loyzel, Lynn P. Sweet, and John E. Perkins for FJ Durrell Corp. and Perkins Agency Inc., a public hearing for an application for site plan at 195 South Main Street, tax map U4, Lot 27, in the M3 Zone. The proposal is to convert a residential dwelling to professional office use and residential space. See the applicants here?
Can I have a question?
Yes.
I just want to disclose that I have a relative that works with Perkins Agency. They also handle my own insurance personally in business. I don't believe that I have a conflict of interest hearing this particular application, but certainly if the applicant feels that way, or any of the board members are abutters, I'd be happy to recuse myself.
I have no problem with it. Does anybody have any issues with that?
The applicant?
The applicant? You okay? Okay.
Where should I set up my easel?
I don't know, where can the people at home see that? In front here, somewhere facing that way?
Facing towards you, fish?
Yeah.
Over, yeah, the corner, that'd be great.
Why, he's doing that, I made a copy of at least the two sheets for everybody, 11 by 17, that should be on your, if you don't have the full set.
And we have full sets, so there's extras if anyone in the audience wants a set. There you are, the first two pages, not the full set.
All right, would you please introduce yourself and give us, obviously, a presentation of what the proposal is?
Sure. For the record, my name is Tobin Farwell, Farwell Engineering Services, here representing Lynn and John, owners of Perkins Insurance Agency. Currently, they have to relocate, they live, they live, they work right across from the school right now. I don't know if you guys are all familiar, Perkins Insurance Agency, right off of Main Street, right across from the school. And unfortunately, they have to move. And so they found this opportunity to buy this property at the corner of Maple Streets and South Main Street. And it's in the M3 District. And so the first order of business was obtaining a special exception for the use in the M3 District. And they made an application and went before the zoning board and gained that approval for reuse of a structure for an office use with minor changes to the building. Next, we, so we move forward, we start to prepare a site plan, and we want to have a one-way-in access off of South Main Street. So we got involved with DOT, met with them several times, and there were some issues, conflict back and forth, they weren't sure that they wanted to have the one-way-in. But we felt that it was such a low volume of use that that would not be an issue. And so they recommended that we get backing of the town, and the town's a public works director, and we did that, and we went forward, got that. And so DOT has provided us with a lever, they've given us a verbal conceptual approval, and they provided us with a letter. I'd like to put that to the board at this time. I only have one copy, but you can pass it around, want to review it? So we have DOT approval, and now we're before you. It's a very small lot, this is a little less than a quarter of an acre lot, existing dwelling on it are currently. I have some pictures of that as well, it's kind of nice just to see, you can pass those around. So what the Perkins, they would like to move their insurance agency over to the first floor of this. Parking, they would also like to have an apartment on the second story, an accessory apartment for it. And based on the parking required, it would require seven parking spaces, but the lot is pretty tight, so we can provide six parking spaces on-site. We feel that the town parking lot is very close by, so that we feel we are requesting a waiver from this regulation with the knowledge that the town parking lot is very close. This is not a high-use business, they occasionally have clients come by to sign paperwork or whatnot, but it's not a very high-traffic-volume use for it as well. Lighting for the site, there will be some wall-mounted lighting to light up the parking lot. It will be on a timer or on a switch as well, so they only light it up when you need it. In the middle of winter, when the folks are heading off to home, they want to have the parking light lit up. But very downcast and shielded lighting will be provided, meeting the town standards. Let's see, drainage, also drainage, because we're proposing very little change to the site, there's a little bit of, obviously, pavement that we have to add to accommodate the parking. The drainage flows from, to the south, so we're proposing to put a rain garden to attenuate the flow. It'll be very little increase to it. The soils there are very tight soils, so you're getting a pretty high runoff right now, and that will not change. We will attenuate as much as we can with the rain garden, so it should be less than pre-development conditions with that rain garden added to it. Let's see, and we have, as part of that, I read, I got a copy of this, the recommendations for a condition of approval, and I was reviewing those with the owners. We had, we are concerned, there is a large 24-inch maple, it's going to be right next to the parking area, and obviously, some excavation will have to happen right next to that tree, some roots may be damaged. It is the intent to keep that tree, we would want to keep that tree, but I just, if it should happen to die in the ensuing years, we will do our best to maintain that tree, but the reality is it might die. But we will keep it there and do our best to keep it.
Can you point out where that's located?
Sure. 24-inch maple, it's two-thirds of the way down.
Okay, that's on the designated property land. So the impact is relative to the pavement impact, not the parking area?
Right, right. In order to make the pavement nice and secure, you have to dig down, remove the topsoil, put in gravel there. And, you know, it's hard for us to tell right now how much the root condition, how close we're gonna, how deep the roots are, that type of information.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, knowing this was an issue, I don't know if this is helpful, but I copied some details of potential protection measures for the tree. One includes installation of a grade beam, so that the wall is supported with a non-continuous footing that might help limit the root severing, and the other is if, it looks like it's going to be in a fill condition, maybe, so to put a retaining wall around that. And if you'd like, you can just, to get you started thinking about that, if you have any questions, feel free to call me. Another thing I just wanted to mention is, if it does die, perhaps we can make it as a condition that...
We haven't accepted the application.
Sure, no, no, I understand, but you talk about the health of the tree.
You should only be asking questions.
Sure, but would you be willing to potentially replace the tree, or if it were to die?
Right, that, we need to, we need to accept the application before we get into the details. Understood?
I'm just mentioning that, it's something to think about.
Are you all done with your presentation?
I am, I've completed the presentation. I'm available for questions, as well as the owner. I guess, oh, I'm sorry, I do apologize. We did have one other thing, the, there is, the Perkins have an existing sign for the business, it is the intent to replace that with the same sign. Here's a picture of the sign, it appears to meet the requirements of sign ordinance.
Okay, so Diane, we've heard the presentation, is it, you want to give us some discussion about the completeness of the application?
Yes, I reviewed the application against the checklist, and it's substantially complete. There's a couple of things. Mr. Farwell mentioned that they would be seeking a waiver to the parking requirements. Seven spaces are required, six are shown on the plan. Also, they need to provide to us some kind of a landscaping plan, and that could indeed address the situation that arises with the protection of the sugar maple, and could be incorporated into that plan. And other than that, the application meets requirements and can be accepted for technical review.
Okay, do any board members have any questions or concerns?
Do we have written waivers from the applicant, written requests for waivers from the applicant?
Did you put those in writing, Tobin? I was looking for those.
It is written on the plan.
It's on the plan, right?
Okay.
The plan has been noted. Question, is this, is this? I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
Is this the tree we're talking about here, or is that something else? No, that's on the other side. That's on the Maple Street side. Sorry, sorry.
So we have waiver request on the plans.
Okay.
We have one, correct?
One.
And one that I...
We have one waiver request on the plan?
One of the...
For the parking?
One of the parking requirements, I'd like to review with the board and get an interpretation, and depending upon what the planning board says, a waiver may be in order or not.
Okay.
Would you like me to review that situation at this point, or would you like to hold off?
Yeah, because I think it goes to the completeness of the application.
Okay, absolutely. And Mr. Farwell, you can respond as appropriate. We do have a requirement where parking cannot be located within a setback, and this is an R3 district, and the setback requirement is 25 feet. And if you look at the plan and follow the front line of the houseover and the 24-foot mark, you'll see that a portion of the handicap access aisle, it's called, falls within that area. And I guess the question, it's really an interpretation matter, does the access aisle constitute a parking space, or is it related to the parking space? And does the planning board feel that a waiver is in order because it's sort of a gray area and it's not black and white? Do we have any response to that?
My...
Go ahead, Val.
My opinion would be that it doesn't constitute part of the actual parking space, and that our, the particular regulation does not refer to pavement within the setback, it refers to parking within the setback.
Okay. Elizabeth?
I was gonna say that I think, given the tight limitations of the site and the fact that car will not be parked in there, which is really the intent of the ordinance, I think, and that is simply an access space to facilitate someone getting in and out of the car, I also think that that's fine.
Okay. Janice?
I have no problem with that.
Right, no? I happen to agree with that, so I guess we're good to go with that.
Okay, and so disregard item six on the list of conditions, because you feel that's incomplete.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so do any, any board members have any questions or concerns about the completeness of the application?
Just thank you.
We have to accept the application if we choose first, before we can actually start talking about the particulars, so, or deny it and give it back to them and tell them what they need to submit. So what's the pleasure of the board?
If Diane thinks it's complete, I'd say it's complete.
Do you want to make a motion to accept it, then?
I make a motion to accept the application.
Motion's made in seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the application, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes, thank you. Now we can start talking about the details of the application. We just heard the details from Tobin. I know there are some abutters here who want to speak, so I'm gonna have the abutters speak first, and then let's get their input, and then we can talk. Would you like to speak yet? Need to step up to the podium and name and address, please, name, rank, and serial number?
My name is Marsha Moody, and I live at 1 Maple Street, and I directly abut the property. I'd like, I don't have an actual photograph, but I'd like to pass this camera around so that you can see. One of the things they want to do is tear down the garage next to, and that's going to be the pavement of the road that the drive-through, plus it's going to have two of the parking spaces. And you can see how close it is to my property. My property is here with that gate, and this is the road, and you can see that the two roads are right there together, that's my driveway.
So your property's on the right-hand side?
Yes, that's my...
It's on the right-hand side, it's yours.
That's the driveway to my house, and it directly abuts, if you look on your plan, and you look at the garage, right here, right, and all along this line right here, that is my property.
Does the garage actually encroach on your property?
It just, it's right there, it isn't, well, did you see the picture?
Well, can I direct this to the applicant?
Yes.
Has this property been surveyed?
Yes.
Does the garage encroach on the abutter's property?
You can't tell from the plan.
It's really not, you can't tell, it's close. The surveyor didn't pick that up?
It is not, according to the survey plan, it does not encroach upon the...
Hold on, one person at a time, please. No, that's, I'm, sorry, I didn't hear your answer.
In response to that, the garage is right on the property line, it is not encroaching.
Right on the property line.
Okay, thank you.
And the second question I have, Diane, you do not have this third sheet with your map, but it's in reference to the pond, or the garden there. There's an impervious liner to that, and then there's a drainage pipe that's beneath that, and it says the overflow pipe directed to approved disposal point. Where is that disposal point? That's either gonna dispose it in my yard or in my neighbor's yard.
That's a fair question. Tobin, will you please come up and address that?
Absolutely. Yes, that's a, that's a common detail that I have as a rain garden, and this...
This is my property here.
Yep, and it will not, there'll be no overflow structure. The intent of this rain garden is to fill up, take advantage of any percolation that'll take place, which I wish there was more, but they will get what it can get, and that volume of water will fill up that pond, and then it will overflow just as it does now and run onto the abutting property.
My abutting property.
So the liner, there's not gonna be a liner there?
There's not gonna be a liner.
It's gonna infiltrate as best it can?
Infiltrate as best it can.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, it shows on the detail that the impervia, impervial, impermeable liner is up above, it's not along the bottom. Of course, there has to be, to allow infiltration, you can't have an impervious liner.
Right, right. Sheet, D2.
This is one of the engineering...
Well, I think what he just said is that the water's gonna run into that area, if there's a lot of water, it's gonna overflow, it's gonna go into the same spot it goes now, is what they're saying. He's saying there's gonna be no more water leaving the site after this than there is now.
And then what about that retaining wall that they're going to build between my driveway and where the existing...
Before we go on to the retaining wall, can we go back to the rain garden?
Yes, and...
Go ahead.
To help you answer the question.
Okay, just in terms of, just simple questions that you may have addressed here, the engineer may have addressed here, but the amount of runoff before and post, where, is that calculated somewhere?
Because the, I did some calculations, but I didn't provide a report because it's below the threshold that's required.
But it potentially, more runoff could be occurring because there's more pervious surface than predevelopment.
Right, but the, because of the types of soils, they're very tight soils out there, that according to my rough calculations, and if you want me to provide some, I can, but not at this time, that the, that it will be below pre-development conditions or match pre-development conditions.
Well, I'm not sure I'm convinced about.
Can you provide a statement? I mean, I have the same concern that Elizabeth has, and it'd be helpful if we could, you could provide some kind of a statement to that, that also...
Well, hold on, hold on a sec, let's, before you ask, let's hear from the rest of the board, because I understand Elizabeth's concern.
It sounds perfectly reasonable to continue looking into this.
So you want to see some rough drainage calc, to show that the, there's less runoff post than there is now?
That it is in fact below the threshold.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be, that'd be great, I think it'd be fair.
And when, and Janice?
Yeah, I think Mrs. Moody has a very valid point. If I was an abutter, I'd be concerned about drainage runoff going onto my property.
Right, right now, I'll put...
Hold on, hold on. Rick? Val?
I think I'd like to discuss this when we're actually discussing the...
The whole thing?
Right. I think at this point, I'd like to hear what the abutter's concerns are, and then get into the discussion of this, of the actual site plan.
I, I, just addressing this point still, I think there are other ways that can contain the drainage so that overflow doesn't go onto the neighbor's property. I think that that is, I think that's important as courtesy to the neighbor.
Yeah, but just to be clear, I mean, I have to agree with Val that we should try to talk about this all at the end, but they, they're not charged with preventing all water from going on the neighbor's property.
No, I understand, but it's an opportunity, considering the very close proximity which the photograph has showed, I believe that there are things that can be done to ameliorate that, including some sort of landscape buffer, for example.
Okay.
But it's extended.
So, Ms. Moody, what, you had another concern about...
Well, I had another concern about the drainage, because again, whenever there's heavy rains or heavy snowfall, one of the problems that we have on Maple Street is that there are a lot of power outages. Now, in my basement, I have already two sump pumps, but they go out as soon as there are power outages, and we have very frequent power outages on Maple Street. And I've had flooding in my basement three times, and it's cost me over $10,000 just to dry the basement out, disinfect it, and repair what damage has been done. So I'm very concerned about any kind of additional drainage.
Understood. What else, any other concerns you have?
Yes, I have the concern about the retaining wall, too. Again, how high is that going to be, and how far, how close to my property is that retaining wall going to come?
I'm not sure there is a retaining wall.
Well, there's a wall that's on the, on the map there, from the driveway. And again, that drive-through is a big concern of mine. My question is, since the municipal parking lot is so close, and they don't expect that heavy traffic there, why can't the customers use that municipal parking lot?
Okay, any other concerns?
Well, those three concerns, the proximity, the two parking places, again, for the residents that are going to be, you know, almost abutting, again, my property, and the wall that's going up there, and the drainage, those are my three main concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else in the public want to speak?
Oh.
Take your time, we're in no hurry.
Okay, my name is Larry Moore, me and my wife, Ali, in here, we own the property that abuts it right, if you're facing the house in question, we are to the left side of it, okay? The tree that's in question, it really shades our apartment house during the summer months, and of course, I realize if we lost the tree, they could plant another one, but we're talking a lifetime by the time it gets to be the size of this one, 24-inch maple. That's one of the concerns, and he's pretty well addressed that. My other concern is also getting back to the rain garden, okay? If for any reason, I mean, right now, you've got lawn all the way across there, so as we get heavy rainfall, the lawn is absorbing an awful lot of it. So, true, there might be some that comes over, you know, going down. Mrs. Moody is in worse shape, she's lower than what our property is, so a lot of the water would be going over there. But my concern would be, what happens if, for whatever calculation, you put the hot top in there, you're gonna concentrate that water coming down, it's gonna go into this rain garden. Let's say for whatever reason, miscalculation, whatever have you, the rain garden don't take care of it, and it starts to flood, what kind of recourse do we have to come back on this? Again, can we revisit this, to have this repaired? You know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying. The typical answer is no. If it, if it gets approved, it's approved. You always have recourse on the property owners if you have an issue. You don't have recourse to the planning, you can't come back to the planning board and open up a hearing and try to change it. You don't have that opportunity.
So short of a lawsuit, that'd be the only way to get around it.
Or, yes, yeah, or discussion with them, and if there's an issue to resolve.
Right, well, that's the main concern that we have with it, right there, okay?
It's a runoff issue.
It's a runoff issue. Because I know that you had hot top on it, you're gonna concentrate all that water coming down in one spot, it's gotta go someplace.
Yes.
And as we all know, we've had a lot of rain, and we've had these 100-year floods too often, you know?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in the public like to speak? Sir?
Good evening, folks. My name is Hector Hamill. I reside at 193 South Main, and happen to be tenants of the Moores for the past 12 years, and I'd just like to address a few things. Just going back to, first, just to, you know, for those that aren't familiar, looking at the M3 District, looking at things that are compatible with the existing nature and character of this predominantly residential neighborhood. I find it very upsetting that paving over 80% of the green space between the properties and putting in danger, as to say, a 24-inch maple, well, 24 inches is not in height, that tree's about 40 feet tall. It's a beautiful, mature maple tree. For that to be in danger and to pave over green space in the neighborhood is hardly consistent. consistent with the residential neighborhood. It's a beautiful area, all the neighbors that I've spoken with are very upset about this project, and they don't want to see it happen at all. And just looking at other things, I have the minutes of the ZBA meeting. They're talking about making exterior minor changes and keep the look and feel of the present neighborhood. We're talking apples and oranges. Paving over the area and putting that tree in danger is not in keeping in the look and feel of the neighborhood. And in addressing this water runoff, rain garden issue, a lot of the rain, yes, currently, even though it is hard soil, as said, I agree, because I've been doing yard work there for 12 years, it is soil. The, a lot of it will percolate down. However, if you pave all of that, you're essentially making an asphalt gutter into this mosquito pit. And whatever water it holds in season will turn out to be a mosquito pit until it perks out. And again, with the runoff out of it, I don't see how that area can contain that much volume of water coming down. It will certainly overflow. I can pretty much guarantee it. Look at the area in the Mother's Day floods. I can pretty much guarantee this little rain garden will not and cannot contain that water. And those are concerns of mine, again, going along with the Moores and Miss Moody, that just the entire proposal, I just find to be bad for the neighborhood. It's not a good thing, and a lot of the other neighbors, if this is continued, I'm sure you will hear from other neighbors in the area, that we want to keep our residential neighborhood as residential. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alrighty, thank you all for your input. Now we can start our deliberations. We've accepted the application.
Okay.
Right?
I had another concern about the stormwater.
Yep.
The rain garden, and it was alluded to, but we need to make sure that the subsurface soil conditions are such that the water will indeed percolate, and that there will be infiltration. And I guess the question I have is, have you done any soils borings, excuse me, Tobin, that would show that we, what kind of soils the substrata has?
No, I've looked up the NRCS, I've looked up the NRCS soil data for this area.
Which is very generalized.
Which is very general, absolutely. And that's the intent.
Okay. Hold on one second, okay. So we've heard all the abutters talk about runoff, and obviously runoff is a concern of the neighbors. Now, our, because of the size of this site plan, our regulations do not require an official drainage analysis.
Right. But that doesn't mean we can't ask for additional information.
I'm not saying that, I'm just going through the steps, okay? So, so at this point, the engineer has not provided any kind of drainage calculations or anything. You've done, used the soil maps and determined what the soils are, and determined what the additional runoff was, and you sized this constructed wetland or rain garden, right? That's what's been done to date, okay? So, what I'm hearing from Diane, and I think I'm hearing from Elizabeth, is that you would want to see at least a drainage memo with the, you know, simple calculations showing that the runoff after construction is going to be equal to or less than before construction. But for the abutters and everybody at home, you know, the applicant is not required to stop all water from going on to your property. They, the water that goes there now, all they have to do is prevent any additional runoff from going on to your property. So whatever goes there now can still go there, or the amount can still go there. They can't increase that flow, okay? So that's how these things are usually sized.
Can I, there's one other point about the rain garden is typically, the, there has to be a notation, and maybe I'm missing it, but where the mean average water table is, because the rain garden bottom should be two feet above the water table to prevent any contamination of waters into the groundwater, and I'm not sure that I see that marked here.
I don't think he's done that. I don't think he's-
But that, I think that's important.
I think that's very relevant.
Because there's a lot of distillates and so forth in the pervious-
Understood. So, Val, what's your opinion on this? You want to see a more detailed drainage study?
I think there should be, the answer to that is yes. I think that we should, that the board should be having a better understanding of the functionality of the rain garden, and then, as everyone's discussing, the pre- and post-runoff calculations, so that there is some burden to address one of the abutters' concerns about recourse. There's got to be some burden put on an engineer that is certifying that the pre- and post-runoff is not increased.
Understood, yes.
Okay, just in terms- And also that the soils in the substrata are capable of handling the increased infiltration, or can be infiltrated, and that requires doing soil tests, test pits, to be able to determine that.
I just had this sort of a general idea to throw out here that might help with this, which is, do we, instead of asking for a waiver of one parking space, that maybe they ask for a waiver of more than one parking spaces? And that would potentially give more green for infiltration, it would decrease runoff, and there is also street parking nearby to help with that. So if more parking spaces were decreased, then I think a lot of these other problems would be ameliorated.
So that's kind of put you on the spot.
Well, you know what I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as an idea that makes sense, because if, in reality, you don't really envision, you know, six cars traveling at once to your place of business, even if you did have that circumstance, car, there is parking on the street, and there is parking across the way, and there's parking at other businesses that are within a close walk also.
Do you believe there's no parking on the street?
No.
Well, in front of the town hall, there is. There's the railroad street parking area.
Yes.
So, so, I mean, that's close by, it's close by, yeah.
I'm comfortable with asking for, I mean, I don't think we need a full drainage analysis, but I think what you're hearing is we want a drainage summary, drainage study, you know, brief memo with the pre- and post-calculations and the size of the rain garden appropriately.
And stamped by the engineer.
Well, yeah. Eventually, as we go through this, everything will be stamped, so.
And another idea also is to have paving that is permeable, you know, there are other options, but I, so there are things to play with, and I'm just throwing those building blocks out there.
Yes, yes. Tobin, I think unfortunately that you're going to have to kind of dig a hole in the backyard there, find out what's there, disturb there, ruin the grass there, and, you know, do a test pit at the site and get that, all right? You know, I think that's a kind of unanimous request of the board.
There's another-
Go ahead.
Another point of what I'm talking to in a secondary way is the, is the buffer, since you are right on the line, and if there are concerns that have been shared about the proximity of parking right next to her, if, you know, if we are, let's say even doing away with one, we have one fewer spaces, if not two fewer spaces, there could be, you know, we could have very nice landscaped evergreen buffer or something in between the two properties where the garage now stands, there would be room that could help infiltrate water potentially. Yes, but there is, but the drive-through isn't taking up the whole space according to my plan. There's still room there for buffering, and if you don't have those two parking spaces, the, you know, the drive can be moved slightly or narrowed. There are options, I think, to make for less pervious paving.
Understood. I don't think it's fair for us to sit here tonight and try to have you make a decision tonight about what you want to do with parking. I'm comfortable with the parking as shown, as long as you can show that the runoff doesn't exceed what's there now. That's myself personally, I know you would like to see some reduced parking, but obviously you have to run a business, and this is America, nobody's going to park down the street and walk to you. That's why we have drive-throughs.
You've got half a dozen different plans.
Yeah. Could you, excuse me, could you stand up at the podium and introduce yourself, please?
Yes, John Perkins, Perkins Agency. Tobin did a number of plans. We tried to address the tree issue, we've tried to address some of the parking. One of the alternate plans, because of DOT, was to have one entrance off Maple Street rather than the one-way. In that case, it took the tree out, and I don't blame the person for being upset. We got the town, we had the highway, the fire department, all go to DOT to bet for us. They've come back and said, okay, you can have the one-way in, which put the tree back in. It gave us more green space. It gave us, in that process, it gave us a lot more, doubled the size of the rain garden, because the other way, the rain garden had to shrink. So, I mean, we've tried to, I understand the calculations, and I understand that stuff, but we've tried, so far, to come to an agreement with everybody.
Can I ask you a question while you're there? The parking, the two spaces on the side, are those for the apartment? Are they going to be designated for the apartment versus the business?
They could be, or they could be employees or others, I mean, it's just the parking overall.
Okay, okay.
One unit, correct?
Just one unit.
Yes. Thank you. So we've, go ahead, Val.
Just a question for Diane. Relative, again, to the comment of recourse, if the rain garden fails, is it not the responsibility of the property owner to ensure that all conditions of, that the site plan and all conditions of the site plan are maintained?
That could be a condition of approval, but-
It's not inherent in the site plan approval? If we're approving a rain garden?
No, but I think in this case, if they were to come in with a full-blown stormwater management plan, that would include maintenance provisions and how the BMP, the best management practice, will be maintained over time. So we could ask them to add some notes to the plan, that might clarify how that rain garden will be maintained, and so if there are problems in the future, the town would have some recourse. We'll go back and say, well, you're really not in compliance with what you said you were going to do, and we would like to see it be ameliorated, whatever the issue might be. I also want to point out that these plans are going to be stamped by a professional engineer, and if he says that, you know, the post-flow is not greater than the pre-development flow, and this is a system designed to handle the floodwaters for, you know, I believe our regulations call for a 50-year flood, then that certification on the plan could, you know, that would give them some kind of legal recourse, I would think, and I'll ask the engineer in the room to clarify that if I'm incorrect.
Yeah, unfortunately, what would happen in a situation like this is, if the rain garden is built and it doesn't work, the neighbors are going to complain, they're going to complain to the town, they're going to complain to the owners. They will then get ahold of their engineer, who will decide, yeah, it, you know, was built wrong, it's working the way it's supposed to be, or whatever the case may be, but it's basically a civil issue at that point. And if the neighbors feel like they've been aggrieved, they can sue the owners, the owners can sue their engineer, you know, it's-
Hopefully their recourse is short of suing each other.
No, but I mean, right, but I mean, that's ultimately, we don't have a, I don't think we have a stick where we can go out and mandate things. We have, as it's being constructed, we have the ability to inspect it, we have the ability to make sure it gets built in conformance if this gets approved, or whatever gets approved, but five years from now, if there's an issue, the planning board's not going to be in the middle of it.
That's why the stormwater regulations call for an operation maintenance plan, and if it's something that's on the plan, then conceivably, it can be enforceable. And again, just because it doesn't meet the threshold for us stormwater regulations doesn't mean that we ignore stormwater. I think it's a very-
Oh, I understood.
-important issue, and that, you know, I think it's certainly a legitimate concern.
And I don't think they've ignored it, I think, you know, he's, Tobin has shown a, I keep wanting to say constructed wetland, rain garden, to ameliorate that, we just need to see the backup for that, and that's what we're asking for.
I think there are other ways that the, if there is an overflow to that stormwater, we could be, overflow, instead of being directed onto the neighbor, could be directed elsewhere. It could be directed into an underground storage cistern. If there could be, there's more room in terms of, there's some space here where the rain garden could be extended, or overflow's extended into a second rain garden. I just would like to see provision for, typically, there is a provision for overflow, for any sort of storage area for water, and I think that there are other solutions to jumping in on the neighbor's property. So I think that they can look at that again, and I would feel much more comfortable with a second look at dealing with the overage of the water from that rain garden.
Well, I think he needs to, I mean, I, I think we're jumping the gun here, we need to see his calculations and everything and see what-
That's an additional, that's an additional interest. It's not, it's not, it adds to the stormwater. I'd like to see provision for the overflow to not go onto the Moody property.
See, I don't, I completely disagree with that.
Okay, well, I-
Because, absolutely.
First of all, we have to go according to our rules and regulations, and I understand that. I just want to say, I like the idea about the cistern that Elizabeth had. That may work. I'm not an engineer, but I do want to say that the Perkins business graciously sold their business to the town of Newmarket, to the school, so if that site ever needs to be developed for the school, that it was given. I think we should work with them according to our rules and regulations to make this happen, and to also have the abutters happy. I think it can be done. I know the Perkins also have generously, through many, many years in this community, has donated to many organizations in this town, the recreation department, the school, senior citizens, I know they've given a lot. I know, but we do have to-
What do you want to see here? What do you want to see here is the question?
I like the idea that Elizabeth had, if it can be done, is about the overflow for the cistern.
Okay, and let me give you my opinion of that.
And I think it all can work out.
It's not a requirement anywhere in any of our regulations for anybody to do that.
I know, but I'm just saying, if people can all work together and have happy abutters of down the road-
The cistern is not cheap.
And maybe it doesn't have to be a fancy one.
It could be an underground storage facility, but there's also more, there's more room to extend the size of the rain garden, for example.
That's a different story.
We don't have any estimate to show that that's a size problem.
No, right, and but my, and that's my point is that-
I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'd like to see some additional thought given to overage of, spill over of the rainwater and where that could go. So I think that could be looked into.
Does the rest of the board feel the same way is the question?
So what was the question again?
Do you want to see more attenuation of potential stormwater going on to the neighbor's property?
Yes, I think, I think it might be, it might be helpful, but I, if that's the mood of the board, then yeah, I suppose.
Okay, that's-
It might be nice, but I'd really like to see how that soil is going to react to, you know, all this additional square footage of asphalt.
Well, see, I think, I don't disagree with you, I think it's, we need to, and we're asking for a drainage study to be done. Until we see that, I think any other discussion is premature. You know, they may go back and do that, and they may have some other conversations, and they may want to do some other things, and some of this may change, so. But in the big picture, if this final site design does not dump any more water under the abutting property than there is today, then that's what our regulation requires. I don't think we have the right to require anything more than that. Now, if, if they want to look at something and do a belt and suspenders thing, that's certainly within their right as the property owners to do, but I don't think it's right for us to ask for more than what our requirements are. Go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to point out for the benefit of the plan that we did adopt stormwater regulations back in, I believe it was 2011. regulations back in, I believe it was 2011, if I'm not mistaken, maybe 2010, and the threshold is, if a project adds more than 5,000 square feet of impervious area, you need to present a detailed plan, and you need to have a maintenance plan and all that good stuff. And I just want to point out to the board that this isn't that far away from the threshold because the additional impervious area is 4,257 square feet. So, I guess in looking at that, I don't believe that anything that's been suggested by the board tonight is being unreasonable or contrary to the intent of our ordinance.
Yeah, we're just asking for a drainage report at this point. I think, I agree with you.
But not a full-blown study, which would be required if it was 5,000.
Right, right.
Right, exactly.
But, but for this, for something of this size, I think what...
It really should be relative to the law.
Exactly, it's going to be provided, it's going to give us the answers we need. It's going to say, this is the pre-storm, pre-development runoff, this is the post-development runoff, and because of the pavement, without any mitigation, it would be more, so we have a rain garden in here, which is going to mitigate that, and here's the capacity of the rain garden, and here's what the flow off the site afterwards is going to be. I mean, I think that is what we're charged with, ensuring that there's no more runoff than what is there today.
And two other things, maybe related or not, in terms of the buffering?
Can we talk about the buffer requirements, because since that garage is coming down, the, you know, the butter is newly exposed completely to the site?
Yes, I'd like to go, we will.
Okay.
I'd like to go through... Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, sir. Don't, don't, if you're going to speak, let's come up to the microphone, but we're going to, we're not going to go down there yet. I want to go through the abutters' concerns, which we just talked about, drainage, and then Ms. Moody talked about the garage that is right on the property line coming down, and she mentioned a retaining wall. My review of the plans, there is not a retaining wall there.
There is, there is over here.
On, at the house, not on the property line. Correct?
Who owns the garage? Is that on the property?
On this property.
Okay.
Right, and, and I understand Ms. Moody's concerns, but if you look at, and this is what I think Elizabeth was getting to, the garage currently is right on the property line, and that's the picture she showed us, that you can see the garage right on the property line. Under this proposal, the driveway will now be between five and eight feet off of the property line. There will be a, a zone there where...
At the closest point, five?
Yeah, it's where the garage, where the front portion of the garage is, it scales just about five feet, so where the, where the front of the garage is, is five feet, and where the back of the garage is, looks like it's eight feet to the property line, so...
Meaning where the pavement will be.
So, the privacy is considerably reduced, is I think.
There's also a fence that's proposed.
There's a fence proposed, yeah, but what I'm saying is that's an area there that is going to be greenscape of some sort, and that's one of the, one of the things we, you know, I think we had talked, we haven't talked about, but as part of this, we need to see some sort of landscaping, and I would guess that that's an area that's going to be landscaped.
Nicely buttoned.
It's a green area.
Okay.
And it's, and it calls for a stockade fence there. Okay, so that, to be clear, that's what happens there. The garage is on the line, it gets torn down, and the driveway now is five to eight feet off with a stockade fence and landscaping of some sort. So, does anybody have any, anyone want to talk about, discussion about the garage or the parking on that side?
Well, I think that the stockade fence is a minimal requirement. We were trying to upgrade our landscape regulations, as everyone knows, and I think Diane's point is a good one for the overall look of the town, that the style of the fence be a quality fence, and, and I think that would be important for the neighbor also. And the stockade fence is, is very inexpensive and not a high-quality fence, and I don't think it's not appropriate for the look of Newmarket's downtown area, so, and since we're talking about the buffering, I think the fence should be upgraded to a higher-quality fence.
Okay, and before we get too much into particulars, can, can any of you speak about what the proposed landscaping is going to be? Any idea at this point? I know, we're going to need to see something, so...
Sure, we certainly, there's going to be a lot of snow storage in that area, so it's going to be hardy. We were thinking more bush-type of stuff.
You know, we, well, thought about trees, but we're, again, because of the snow storage issue, we don't want to put trees and too much in that, but we did want to get a feeling from the...
We're, we're talking about the area around the garage, and your snow storage is up on the other location.
Well, I hate to tell you, but when they plow it, they're going to plow that into the landscaping as well.
So, you're talking about both areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there should, there could be trees that could withstand some snow piled against their feet if they're...
Against their feet, yeah.
Yeah. It's a tricky...
Sure, but I think it could be resolved.
But, but I, my opinion is, we're going to see a landscaping plan. Does everybody else? I mean, as part of our regulations, everybody else on board with a landscaping plan? Val, go ahead.
Um, I just think if the applicant is planning to have snow stored in that particular area, because that won't be part of the calculations of drainage, at this point in time, there's no water draining from that area because of the garage onto the abutters' property. But if now you're believing that snow is going to be stored there based upon these topoes, that will be running onto the abutters' property.
In response to the garage, the pitched roof garage, half of the rainfall that hits the roof goes directly onto the abutters' property, impervious surface. So, I thought you just said that it didn't go to the abutters' property.
What I'm, excuse me, half would be going now, but if you're pulling, if you're bringing all the snow over to there, you're going to have all of that additional snow coverage there. My only point was if these, if the, if an applicant is planning to store snow on particular areas of, of the site, it should be noted on the site plan. That's my point.
And it's not shown as such right now. And perhaps that area might be the place where the snow is removed off-site because of the potential impact on the adjacent property.
Or that it is graded in such a way as to support the absorption of, of the snow. I mean, there, there are different alternatives.
Yeah, I mean, I think, obviously, we know enough that they plow, there's going to be snowbanks all over the place. Unfortunately, we have to deal with it.
With regards to the stockade fence, the finished side needs to face the abutter, correct?
There's no restrictions.
There are not.
We don't have a fence ordinance.
We're trying to get rid of stockade fencing in our...
But our current regulation...
We do not, unless it's in the site review regulations.
The way I read, the way I read this plan...
There could be something there.
Well, there was no detail on that.
I guess, no, there isn't. I was going to say, the way I read it, it looked like it was facing the abutter, but I can't say that.
We do not have a fence ordinance in Newmarket, so we don't permit fences, as we do in some towns, nor do we have regulations.
But we may require specific plantings and/or, you know, some, to screen specific impacts, so this might be a situation where we require a quality fence versus...
What is the intent of the stockade fence, facing in or out?
It's going to be on the other side.
Finished side be facing the abutter.
That's not a requirement, but it's...
Okay.
Any board, please, any car?
I'm just asking, it's not, it came up, obviously, and it wasn't, wasn't really clear. Okay.
So, if you need a fence, then you want to put in, which is a board-on-board fence.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? Any board members have any other questions?
Another silly question. Can you, can you store snow on a, on a rain garden, or does that mess it all up? Can you, can you?
No, you can.
You can bank it, you can bank it right up.
Because water, water flows below the snow.
All right, okay, I remember that, yeah, I remember talking about that. So, you could, you could potentially, you know, pile that up ten, 20 feet if you really wanted to, and let it, you know, melt off in July.
Hopefully, this isn't a 20-foot winter.
Yeah, well, I've seen crazy stuff.
There's vertical granite curbing details on the detail sheet, but I didn't see any call-outs on the site plan.
They should be vertical granite, either we'll do vertical or slope granite along the sidewalk for the car stop.
So...
It isn't noted, it should be noted on the...
So, that would be noted on the concrete sidewalk detail?
Val, can I piggyback on that, too? Where you have the handicap parking spot, is there a wheelchair ramp, handicap ramp there?
That will be...
Or is that at grade?
It'd be tipped down in the sidewalk.
There'll be a tip-down in the sidewalk to accommodate the handicap.
Okay, so, but you, so you'll have the standard handicap wheelchair ramp?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask him to put that, isn't noted on the plan?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Is that spelled out in our regulations?
My only other question was relative to the, another abutters' comments relative to the M3 district. So, office is allowed within the district under a special exception. Was the special exception granted through the zoning board?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and were there any conditions of approval on the special exception?
That's a good question. I brought the minutes along. Let me see if I can find that out for you. I went to the zoning board on August 5th, 2013, and it was approved unanimously by the zoning board, and there were indeed two conditions, that the use, meet the requirements as set forth in the zoning ordinance, and which included that the existing residential structure shall be reused only with minor changes, and they represented that the ZBA, as they have here, that they may be removing a porch, they'll be removing the garage, but for the most part, they're going to be keeping the character of the structure, and it was determined by the ZBA, as part of their deliberations, that the intended use is a feasible one, and that was approved unanimously by the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have, else have any more questions? Okay, so, I will try to recap briefly. I think what we'd be looking for, we're looking for drainage analysis, pre and post, to size the proposed rain garden, and we're looking for a landscaping plan.
Test pits?
Yeah, that's part of the rain garden, part of the drainage, or test pit.
Dry water, maybe?
Yes, yep. Go ahead.
And also, I'd, I'd like to see provision for overflow from rain garden.
Yep, yep. Provision for overflow?
Yes.
Or provision to prevent any flow from going on the abutters' property?
Well, to see what their plan is for overflow direction.
With an eye to preventing and the additional runoff on the...
With, with trying, trying to look for an alternative other than journey, given her basement situation and just in the light of trying to improve a situation, once you get into a situation, we always try to ask that everyone improve a given situation, not go for the minimum.
That's not going into hers, though, so, you know, it's going into the other abutters' yard.
No, no, it's going into hers.
It goes this way, right?
Goes south, it's going...
Going south, the topo.
I thought it was, but I thought the...
96, 98, so it's going in that corner.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't, I don't know, her, her, oh, her property is, looks down, so it would go to her basement.
Yes.
Okay. We don't have the grading for her property, right? Towards her basement.
Right, okay.
Well, it's a groundwater table issue.
Well, also, two different issues.
Yes, yes.
The overflow would be on the surface.
So, let's, let's take them one at a time, though. The, we want to see a drainage analysis, which includes test pits, blah, blah, blah. We want to see a landscaping plan. Elizabeth wants to see a provision made so that no runoff goes on the abutting properties.
Well, I'd, I'd like to see a provision for what happens to the surplus water when it meets the top of the rain garden at the 50-year storm, if that's what it's designed for, where that water would go, and a couple of alternatives or considerations, so it doesn't go into the neighbor's property. If at all possible, I think there are alternatives to be explored.
Correct, and...
Including previous pavements.
And my opinion is that they're not required to do that. They're required to make sure no additional water goes in.
Sure, that's, that's the requirement, but we can always ask for things other than the minimum.
You have to be careful.
Well, we can ask for them in light of the proximity of the properties and the fact that they're, she's losing privacy, that, that the nature of the property is changing. Given all those factors, I, I think that it behooves us to be sensitive to the new plight of the, of the adjoining resident, given increased...
I'm, I'm sensitive to their concerns, except that I firmly believe that we cannot ask for anything more than our regulations.
We can't ask, but we can, we can hope, maybe.
We can hope, we can hope.
All right.
We can hope, we can ask.
We can hope.
That's, and I, I mean, that's my opinion, I don't know what everybody else feels, but that, you know, that's what we have the regulations for, we, and, you know, ironically, you have to be careful with these, too, because there are situations where if they came in and said they were going to stop our water from, from leaving the site, it would be contrary to state law. If there's a wetland there, they have to keep the water going in the wetland.
Sure, but there isn't a wetland there, and we're not in Arizona, and no one wants that water, but...
You don't know where it ends up.
I agree with you, Erin.
Is there anything else anybody else wants to see? I mean, there's been discussion, obviously, about parking. My opinion is if you can attenuate the additional runoff, as I, I believe you can, I think you're comfortable you can, then I'm okay with the six parking spaces. I know there's been some discussion about fewer parking spaces. I just don't see people parking, you know, 100 yards away to walk over there, you know, they, people don't get out of the car to go to Dunkin' Donuts, they're not going to go to write a check to the insurance agent. I, I don't know how everybody else feels, that's just my opinion, you know, and if you could get away with less parking spaces and you, you're comfortable with that, that would be great, too. That would be a, you know, a win-win, but my opinion is what you have here is okay.
Can I ask, can you just put a point forward about that?
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, for a less frequently-used parking, you know, the fashion now is to use permeable pavers with grass pave or something like that, so an occasionally-used parking space could double as, as grass if you weren't sure, maybe five, maybe six, and then you have overflow parking. I mean, that's another, and that would help handle stormwater infiltration, and you're not really, you have that extra parking space. So, that's an idea you could use for one or two spaces.
If you wanted to look at that, that's, you know, that's up to you, if you feel a need to.
In terms of your stormwater calculations?
Sure, it makes the stormwater that much less, absolutely. John, yep?
We're just generally talking about concerns. I, I just, I just keep thinking about this, this, how this is going to get plowed out, that's just what I'm thinking about. I, I see it, I see all that snow going all the way around the property into this, into the snow, into the rain garden, up against the stockade fence. That's, I just want to see, I just want to see this rain garden work. I want to know it's going to work. I don't, I don't want to see it become a mosquito pit. I want to see it do what it's supposed to do, and that's, that's really my opinion. I like the parking, I like the, I like this perme, I like permeable pavement, little concerned about the tree, but I think we got to see that, we got to see how this, this rain garden is going to, going to solve all these problems, you know, that's where I'm, kind of where I'm at.
Okay, fine. Janice, anything? Does anybody have anything else new to add? You know, I think if not, we probably, go ahead, Val.
I just think that, given the seminar I just gone to, that the, the applicant really should write out a written waiver request for the reduction in the parking and identify the supporting information, because if we're going to grant that waiver, we need to spell out the findings of facts in that, in order to grant the waiver. And the statute's pretty clear on it, and I think we've been pretty lax on it.
Okay, so we need, I guess we need a letter to support the waiver request, not just a note on the plans.
With the reason that we should be granting it.
Yes, yes. Unless anybody else has anything new to add, I guess I'll entertain a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue the site plan review of David Loizell, LMP Suite, Johnny Perkins, for the FJ Darrell Corporation and Perkins Agency, Inc., open for the application for site plan at 195 Main Street, Tax Math U4, Lot 27, the M3 zone, to convert a residential dwelling to professional office use and residential use.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it? Great, I guess... Great, I guess the sooner you can get the information into Diane, they can get disseminated to the board.
Can I ask me to a date certain?
Can you give me a date certain?
Yeah, I thought you did. Did you say December 10?
I did not, thank you. To December 10, 2014.
Do you second?
We second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank the Butters for showing up also. We'll give them a minute to clear the room while we get ready for the next one. Yes, he is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Alrighty, next on the agenda is Acadia Engineers and Constructors LLC, request for a waiver of impact fees pursuant to New Market Ordinance 2001-0, impact fees for public capital facilities subsection 6.11.6 at 13 Water Street, Tax Map U3, Lot 4, and the M2 Zone. Now, I hope that everybody has a package that was in, hopefully it was in everybody's box, that kind of explains the history of the project and what Tim Nichols, what his requests are and what his logic is. So while everybody's getting that out, I'm going to ask the app.
Can we take a minute to read the memo that just came from the town attorney today? Everyone who's just received that this evening.
Yeah, so it's going to have him go first and read that, or do you want to read that first? Want to read it first?
Give the applicant a copy, let us read it.
Okay.
Alan and I could share.
Here you go.
Neither one, I haven't marked it.
Yeah, there's another one for for his. Val, do you want to read that into the record, or do you, what do we want to? Do you want anybody a chance to read it?
All the members should have a chance to read it. Sue left it in front of us tonight.
It's right here.
I got, no, let me rephrase that. I got this at 4:00 this afternoon, and I made copies.
Oh, okay.
Just came in, wanted to press. And I didn't even get a chance to review it with the applicant, which I normally do.
Can you go to commercial?
In light of this letter, the applicant may choose to postpone this meeting.
Let the applicant read it.
No, I'm just suggesting.
All right, go on.
He just got it today to the applicant.
He just got it right now.
Sorry, Tim, I tried to move it along.
And we got your copy too.
Yeah. All right, has everybody had a chance to?
Can we just give you a couple more minutes?
Okay, yeah. Alrighty, I'm going to ask Tim to just walk us through your package, if you will. I assume that letter doesn't change your position? Okay.
Okay. So we've got, as I think most people know, there's really two phases to the project. That was always the plan, the intent. We've got town home units, residential town home units, and we've got an existing building, historic blacksmith shop, that we've been working with the state, DHR, National Park Service. We spent a lot of money with archaeologists doing site investigations and with architectural historians studying the building. We are in the process now. We've submitted part one. There's three parts to historic restoration in accordance with the National Park Service Secretary standards. We've completed part one. We are about to submit part two. And then the third part is post-construction, basically certifying that we restored the building the way we said we're going to restore it. So that's sort of on its own, separate schedule timeline. The townhomes obviously are under construction. Our approach was always to complete the townhomes. The proceeds from those sales essentially fund the cost to acquire the property, which we did in August. Then we're essentially at ground zero to restore the blacksmith building. No bank, no lender would fund the entire project. Simply not, not going to happen unless a private investor came in and offered to do it at very high premium expense, which is unlikely. So the only viable way to get the project done, complete the townhomes, take the sales from those, and then commence on the blacksmith shop reconstruction redevelopment. We've done some minor work in the blacksmith building. We've cleaned it out. We've done some selective demo. We had to do a lot of that as part of the archaeological, architectural, historic survey. We needed to find out where the old windows were, we needed to find out what type of framing we have, what type of timbers. So a lot of that selective demolition has been complete. And we continue to do that, basically sweat equity before we can get any lending on the property. So we are doing, we have moved towards restoration of the blacksmith building. The project is, has commenced, it is moving forward. Until we get approval from the National Park Service, we can't do what we want to do because the only way it works financially is if we get that 20% historic tax credit. So, and that's a very long process. We've been in it for over a year now. And again, invested a lot of money, time, and effort in that process, and we're committed to it. There is no plan for the blacksmith shop other than what was presented to the town, you know, beginning over a year ago. It's still going to be our place of business, our office. It's still going to be residential, it's still going to be commercial and retail in accordance with the M3 or M2 zoning district standards. So nothing has changed from what we asked for and what was approved. The timing of the project, how it all happens, obviously, isn't something that's necessarily approved, including how it's funded. So I'm a little, I guess, taken aback by the the letter of opinion. But in light of that, I guess what I can do is at least move through the waiver portion. And I know there's a question regarding why we were requesting impact fee waivers just on the townhomes and not on the blacksmith shop. And was that, was there some alter reason that we were doing that? And there isn't. Essentially, the blacksmith shop isn't subject to impact fees. It's an existing structure that's going to be renovated to its original historic condition. So the only impact fee that we can request is for the townhome developments, the new construction. And that was the intent of this application.
Point clarification. Do you have something to add?
Yes.
A question or clarification?
Yes, I did. In terms of John Rattigan's letter, it says that, maybe I'm misinterpreting that, but in the blacksmith building, you're going to be also housing three units?
Three residential, as approved.
Yeah, so that's, that strikes my ears a little differently from what you just said in terms of, though there are going to be additional units as part of the blacksmith restoration. Existing, but but additional units to the project. It's not, not just going to be the, you're going to be making more residential units out of the blacksmith's house.
The point of clarification is, impact fees do not apply to existing uses. And so what I'm hearing is, because there's already three, that building already includes three residential units and in the commercial space, that use for that building isn't changing, therefore, it's not subject to impact fees. Is that, that was the clarification?
Okay, and I misheard you, because I thought you were referring to it just as a blacksmith's house. But within that, including, within that, are the three original units. Thank you, I understand.
And their grandfather.
Yes, thank you.
Is everybody clear on that?
Yes, thank you.
So so what he's asking for is, he's asking for a waiver of the impact fees for the four new townhouse units. He's asking for recreation, wastewater, water supply and treatment. And he's suggesting that he still will pay the school portion of the, of the impact fees. So, Tim, would you quickly, for those people at home, walk through the history of the property and what the previous owner had done and committed to and spent? Because I think that's a significant component of your request. I think it's, it's good for the people at home to hear the full story, if you will.
There were actually, there were a couple redevelopment plans for the property going all the way back to 2005, beginning in 2005. The one, the last one before we got involved was to construct a three-story, I believe it was a seven-unit residential condominium building, which would have involved demolition of the existing blacksmith shop. Our original plan was similar to that, except it was going to be mixed use, still with the intent of finding a, an office for our business that we could own. When we went through due diligence process, first we learned that the building was listed on the New Market Historic District, not as a primary structure, but as a secondary supporting structure. We had our architectural historian go through it because that determination was made back in the 80s. So obviously, it was much different, the standards were much different then than they are today. So when our historian went through, she determined that it was, in fact, a primary historic building. So in order for that to happen, in order for that to be on the register, we had to go through a process which required the part one, as I mentioned, the National Park Service part one, study and report and submittal package that went through the state, DHR, and then through National Park Service, and eventually got approved. So that was really without, we needed that before we could even consider preserving that building and making it financially viable. So the the plan really to recast the entire project, and the reason that the two prior developments never happened was because the cost of the property, the site infrastructure that was necessary, just financially didn't work with a single structure that met all of the zoning setback requirements for the site. So the only way we could make it viable was, the only way we could make it viable by preserving the existing building was to add a second building where we could take the proceeds from, the margin from, and invest it in the other property, or essentially pay for the property acquisition, which was about $400,000. So going back, the previous owner, Shabagi, he had an agreement with the town to fund $22,000 worth of improvements, water improvements in the street, on Water Street. And he also had the agreement for the Riverwalk easement with the town. Those two conditions or elements essentially were the basis of the waiver, impact fee waiver that was, that was given to him by the planning board in 2006.
2006, that's correct.
So obviously, the Riverwalk was completed, the water project was completed. The property owner did pay the $22,000 to the town to help offset that cost. So essentially, the conditions of the previous waiver have been met by the existing landowner. And those were, those were considerations when we were analyzing the property and the net value, obviously having impact fees, fee waivers is something that's more attractive financially when you're looking at a project. In addition to the improvements that the previous landowner made, we had to install a new gravity, 12-inch gravity sewer main extending from Rivermore Property onto Water Street. And we added a new manhole for for cleanout. So essentially, we took an old cast iron sewer drain that has probably, had probably met its expected service life and would have needed replacement at some point. And we upgraded that with a modern drainage system. And that was all at our cost of nearly $30,000. A necessary improvement for the site, but obviously a betterment for the town since it is their own, it is a town-owned facility, infrastructure. And in addition to that, we did pay the $8,000 in water and sewer connection fees, which are required for the townhome units. So we are current, we've paid all the fees to the town that have been necessary to date. And what we're asking for is a waiver to the impact fees, with the exception of the school impact fees for those townhome units.
And basically, you're you're asking for that because of the money that's been spent by the previous owner in lieu of, basically in lieu of the impact fees?
Right.
And it runs with the property, basically, is what you're saying?
Well, yes, and the improvements that we made.
Yes.
Essentially, $50,000 worth of improvements of town facilities.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant or proposer? Yes, go ahead.
A couple of things. First, just one thing to keep in mind is that these fees are in $2,005, which, I mean, these are very small fees, I think. We're in 2013. I'm not sure, it's a separate matter, but when our impact fees should be updated so that they're more in line with our situation? Yeah, but I think now it brings it up again as something we should do. And and when, just, I think the assumption that the fees are so-called tied to the land in terms of the waiver, I don't really accept that. I think it's a, we're at a different time now. We are no longer at the height of a boom, the town tax dollars are tight. So those are two points I'd like to bring up. Another point is, given your, given, you know, I, just as a planning board member, I appreciate the monies that you've furthered towards wastewater treatment and water supply and so forth. But I think the recreation facilities, that's, that's really a separate piece. I think that's more tied to the public schools. So I don't, I don't see why that's kind of thrown in there.
The Riverwalk easement, that was granted to the town?
So the recreation, okay, is not, is not really.
Not school.
Not school recreation, but, okay. Not school recreation, but, okay, that clarifies that for me.
And I think what, what Tim is saying is that the property, the previous property owner granted a waiver to the town to, so the Riverwalk runs through their property.
Okay, okay, I understand the recreation now. Okay, I was thinking more of Jim Hilton's work, so.
Okay, and if I can clarify the recreation impact fee waiver that was granted previously. This was a, the Riverwalk project was a project that was funded with 50% coastal program monies, which is through the federal government. But it's required a match, and the match was the value of the easement. And that, at the time, was probably greater than $50,000. But that was the basis upon which the matching funds were approved and the grant was awarded to the town because of the value of that easement. And we have documentation of that in the file.
Val, what are, what are your thoughts?
I think people should know my thoughts by now on our whole impact fees.
For the record, then.
For the record, are they really still in effect?
Yes, we need them.
Read the regulation. My opinion on this is that I, I believe that a prior planning board, based upon off-site improvements that the landowner made and the facilities that they did provide to benefit the public by way of the recreational facilities, more than offsets the, and that that planning board granted $9,270, which is far more, and that was for seven condo units, which obviously is, this applicant is looking for less of a waiver, number one, even though those capital improvements have been made. And then, as the applicant has pointed out, they've made additional improvements, which I'm assuming you're talking about the sewer line is the town sewer line that comes through the project. So I think that the applicant meets the requirements to, for the board to grant waivers. I think that the, the facts that are presented are clear and certainly support our regulations to grant, to grant these.
Okay. Jane?
I agree with what Val just said.
Rick?
I, well, I agree with Val that these things have to be updated, but since they haven't been updated, then I have to go along with, we have to go by the fees that are in existence. And he's offset some of these fees, so just paying the, the public schools is fine with me.
Okay. Janice?
I agree.
How much is the public school?
The public school is $2,197 per unit, which equates to a total of $8,788. That, if, if this waiver were granted, he would be paying that.
Well, regardless whether this waiver is granted or not, he's not requesting a waiver from school impact fees.
No, understood. He's, he's paying that at a minimum. If you don't, if you don't grant the waiver, he's going to be paying more. But he's going to be paying the $8,788 regardless.
And that goes to the schools. Each of these funds are separate.
All, yes.
I agree with Val. Someone said Gabriel?
I agree that it's reasonable that they're waived, yeah.
I have one more issue.
Go ahead.
That is, that this goes back to the elm, because I was, I've been pretty horrified, frankly, at so-called protection.
It's not about the, the waiver, it's not talking about...
Well, it's cited as one of the reasons why these waivers should be, should be granted. And the voluntary preservation and, quote, rehabilitation of historic American elm tree, it was an egregious violation, I believe, at one point when I saw that elm tree during the construction process. And so I would like that elm tree to be looked at by an arborist. And I think that, since that was a condition for our approval and it was not followed as we directed it to be, I would like an arborist to...
We can't take that up under this.
Well, it's brought up in this con... But it's brought up.
It's brought as a reason, but that's...
It's brought up as a reason, so if it's brought up as a reason to support the waivers...
It doesn't open the, it doesn't open us to reopening the site plan review. We can, we can bring it up under, at a different meeting, under site plan, because that had to do with the site plan review.
Well, I, what I would, it's like you say, is I would like an arborist... I disagree with using that, because I don't...
As a reason, understood. Go ahead, Val.
Like I mentioned, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the impact fees. Where's my agenda? Sorry, that we waive the impact fees requested by Acadia Engineers and Construction LLC, pursuant to the Newmarket ordinance 2001-0, impact fees for public capital facilities, subsection 6.111.6, at 13 Water Street, Tax Map U3 Lot 4, M2 Zone, in the amount of $1,300 for recreational facilities. As the applicant has shown, has shown, and as previously granted by a prior planning board, that the easement donation of the waterfront park of $50,000 far exceeds that particular impact. That the applicant's request for $4,076 to be waived from wastewater treatment impact fees is supported by the fact that the applicant has invested $29,728 in the upgrade of the sewer lines. And the request to waive the water supply and treatment impact fees of $2,448 would be waived in light of the, the prior landowner contributing $22,000 to the town to upgrade the water lines on Water Street.
Second.
Okay, now we can have discussion.
An amendment to the motion?
Only if she had intended to amend.
Oh, no, any amendment can be made to a motion, then you have to vote on the amendment.
Yeah.
And my amendment is that if we were to grant this waiver, that we have an arborist see to the proper health and rehabilitation of the elm tree as needed. Since that was, that was not, our previous condition was not met, so in the spirit of hoping that the conditions of this waiver will be met, my faith would be restored.
So there's a motion, is there a second?
To the amendment.
To the amendment, exactly.
No one else wants to support this tree surviving?
Well, I love trees, but how much would it, are we going to kind of guess?
We'd, we would have for an arborist to come and see what needs to be taken, care needs to be taken.
Can I speak? Wait, we, no, no, you can't, you can't, you can't, hold on. This is about the amendment, so there hasn't been a second.
This is that, from my, from my perspective...
We're not talking about it, we're going to wait for a second, hold on. You made, you made an amendment, we have to have a second.
Oh, oh, I thought you were asking me for clarification.
No, we have to have a second. Is, is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. I mean, the amendment fails. So we have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any discussion?
How much would the study of the tree?
That, that has nothing to do with the motion on the table.
Not related to the motion.
I'll try next time.
Right.
He's not allowed to ask any information?
Relative to the motion, this discussion of the motion.
But the motion is, that's not what the motion...
The basis of my motion had the facts. It's no longer...
Yeah.
Alrighty. Any other questions, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of granting the waivers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes.
May I make another motion?
Nope, we're done.
We're done.
We're done with this application.
We're done with the application, but I still would, so to what recourse can I go to see that an arborist visit this elm?
First of all, the site plan is still open, the site plan is not done. So the town still has review, the town still has review authority, the town's still doing inspections if necessary, the, whatever. So it's still an open site plan. So at any time, I believe that any complaints are to, given to...
The code enforcement.
The code enforcement officer. Now, I believe, I mean, I don't want to get too far down this road, but I believe that there has been an arborist look at that tree from the very beginning.
No, but since the construction began, I would like more effort made to preserve the life of that tree, since that was a condition, and a lot of fuss has been made of this tree, touting this project to the National Park Service and for looking for federal money. So I think that if really this is, you know, one of the reasons that you're hoping to get federal money, I think you should take care of this tree.
Yeah, understood. And so I think the proper avenue is to see the code enforcement officer, because the site plan is still open. So at some point, the town has to sign off on the site plan. So it's the appropriate time to make, make that complaint. That's the proper avenue.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
And thank, alrighty, I've got to just find my agenda now. One, one other thing that I wanted to talk about is it relates to the planning board and budget. The, the planning department's budget request for this year has included $10,000 for updating the master plan, for work on updating the master plan. The, the budget committee and whatever is still reviewing that. I think the request has not been clear in what, what it is that the planning department would like to do with that $10,000. I think there's been some pushback about not granting the funding for that. So there's, there's a couple of things that I want to point out to the other members here that we're, I think we're in, we're outside of the regulations, much like our fees, impact fees. There's two chapters of the master plan. One is Chapter 10, which is the future land use. And that is a mandatory chapter. For those of you who don't know, the master plans have some chapters that are mandatory in all master plans by state law, and others, other chapters can be optional. So there's a Chapter 10 in our master plan, which is a future land use master, chapter, which was last updated in August of 2002. The state regulations require that you update that chapter every 10 years. So it was due to be updated in 2012, and it has not been updated. The second issue is the vision statement, which is also a mandatory component, which was last updated in September 2001. And that's supposed to be updated every 10 years, so that was supposed to be updated in 2011. So I guess what I'm asking for is, I'm asking for consensus from, from this board to authorize Diane to write a letter or, or communicate, go ahead.
I would, I would like to recommend that the planning board chair writes the letter in, to reference state statute.
Hold on, hold on, I acknowledge, I acknowledge her, that's, that's fine. I was going to suggest that, yeah, I acknowledge her. So I, I was going to suggest that Diane do that, if you want me to do that, if the board wants me to do that, I can do that, that's fine.
Under state statute, the planning board has the right to request a budget from the, from the town
Yes.
in order to fulfill our, our...
Mandate.
Mandates under the statute.
Yep.
And one of our mandates is to ma, to maintain the master plan.
Yes, yes, yes.
We've already discussed that.
Can I just, the town council, I believe, did not cut this from the planning department budget. It is going to the budget committee for their review. And it was the chairman of the budget committee who suggested that we have, you know, a more formal proposal. And I'm happy to work with chairman and, and put, put that together. But I do think it would be important, it is important, and as Val mentioned, it's certainly within the planning board's purview to request funds for studies and priorities for the upcoming year. And I, I guess I'm looking for some support, that this is something that the planning board is very serious about and they're interested in. And hopefully, that will lend some credence to the, if you want to move.
No, no, hold on a minute. I was going to ask for, I was going to ask for, you know, consensus that we have Diane write a letter. I think Val's point is well-taken in that it probably should come from the chairman. So I will work with, with your approval, I'll work with Diane, and we'll put together a letter to the budget committee in support of the $10,000 request.
Excuse me, but I'd like to know why it's $10,000. No, well, I mean, I'm just curious, does it need to be $10,000? If it were less, potentially it might be.
What, Diane, just for, for, the last one we did...
The last one we did was $10,000.
Okay, that was the economic master plan?
Yes, economic chapter.
And that was for the economic development chapter.
Yeah.
And we use the local funds to the extent that we can to match funding from other sources. And in previous years, we've used funding through the Great Bay Partnership. We've used funding through the New Hampshire Coastal Program. And those monies are, you know, we're not guaranteed that we'll get those monies. But at least this will give us some funds so that we can leverage funding from other sources, so we can do the master plan.
So you're saying maximum would be $10,000?
Maximum would be. And this is only partly the cost, because to actually do a full update of those two chapters, we'd probably run $25,000 to $30,000.
So we're talking about two chap, Chapter 10, that's just highlighted in mind, so...
And the vision statement, which really is the underlying basis.
And the $10,000 would be the maximum town obligation. If we got in-kind services or whatever from anybody else donated, that doesn't count. But the town would donate, support $10,000.
Are you asking about $10,000 for each, or $10,000 for both?
Both.
Total.
Okay, I misunderstood, or I misheard, or...
And there's no guarantee that the $10,000 will get both of them either. It's just, history has shown that the more you ask for, the less chance you have of getting it. Val?
I think, I would like to see annually the planning board be requesting, whether it's through the council or the budget committee, but again, I mean, it's our obligation and our mandate that annually, we request a certain budgetary amount to go towards updating the various chapters of the master plan.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if you look at the list here, there's other chapters that are, are well beyond...
Right. So every year, we should be updating a chapter.
Yes.
And then they would stay in compliance at some point in time when we get there for each 10, each 10-year update.
Right, yep, I agree.
As a resource dictation.
Yes, yes. And it's out of, alls we can do is ask for it. If they say no, they say no.
And also, we have under our, our discretion, the chapters that we choose that are relevant. I mean, maybe we decide that we do not need each and every one of these chapters as part of the master plan. And I think we should look to that, too.
I agree.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's why this time, we're asking, I think we're pointing towards the two that are mandatory that haven't been updated, because we have to have those and they, they should have been updated a couple of years ago. So we should strive to get those done. All right, so I'll take that as a consensus that we'll work together and get something to the budget committee.
Mm-hmm. That'd be great, thank you.
Great, thank you all. I guess next, that kind of was the start of new-old business. Does anybody have any, anything new-old business? Diane, anything?
We would like to postpone the landscape regulations to the December meeting. We did not have a chance to do all of the modifications. We just got minutes this week, which really frame all the changes that we came up with.
And you've got to make them in the other document.
And I have to make them in the other documents, so I'd like a few more weeks to work on that. Thank you.
Seeing we don't have them, I don't know, we have much choice. We can't sit here tonight and look at them.
We can. You can make any sort of motion, anyone can make a motion. It's getting everyone else to okay.
Exactly. Chairman's report, I have nothing new to report. Committee reports, anybody have any?
Well, just, on the conservation, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
On the conservation committee, when Mark West does have his report done, they would like individual copies for each member, please. Do you have money near cream budget? No, but people don't like to read a 40, a 20-page thing on the computer. I don't, I get the stuff, I don't like to see it. Yeah, because they want to compare it to the other one. And the advisory heritage, John and I went to.
Yes, it was awesome.
And everything went well, the recommendation, the suggestions, very well we see.
They were some great suggestions, yep.
From the individuals, from the builders, and just wanted to report back that that was done.
I think, I think the consensus was that it was important to incorporate some architectural characteristics to the addition that they were going to put on the structure that would sort of be more in the, in a historic frame of a train, train depot.
This is the old train depot you're talking about.
Yeah, but we're all, yeah, it's going to look nice.
The color of the door.
We're quite excited about that.
Some hardscaping.
Heritage commission project.
To use their old granite they had from downstairs.
That's right.
In the basement, they're going to, you want to use that outside in the sitting areas.
Pictures inside, and it's, it'd be a great thing.
Anybody down that end, Tim?
EDC, that's not, we're supposed to be meeting this month. We're waiting to hear back from the town administrator on a date.
I did meet with the...
I'm sorry.
Valerie, I did meet with the consultant, Mr. Quos, and with Steve Fornier. And we went through all the different business, commercial zoned areas. And we, you know, looked at feasibility of various lots, and he's integrating... looked at feasibility of various lots, and he's integrating it into a report, I guess he's gonna present to your committee in a couple of weeks. So we spent a good, I don't know, three hours with him on, last Monday, so hopefully he brought away some good information. And the planning commission has offered to assist with some maps, so we'll have some maps to refer to as well.
Okay, can you give us a brief update on the bike path? Have you selected consultants for that, have you selected consultants?
We have gone through a RFQ process, and the committee met last week, week and a half ago, and we have identified a firm that we would like to enter into negotiations with, and we need to ask for clearance from the Department of Transportation before we move forward with the negotiations. And before we do that, we also need to have a, a cost estimate done to assure that the costs are in line with the going rate. So that's in the works, and hopefully we'll be able to go to the council with some kind of recommendation, maybe the December, January meeting.
Okay. And the, the dam removal study, that you finally have a contract signed with that?
Finally. We have a contract with Gomez Sullivan, and they're moving ahead with the bathymetry survey work and the probing, of course, and we had the drawdown the beginning of October. And I just completed my interim report for the Conservation Law Foundation that was due on Friday, and they are, the consultant is proposing to have some kind of a draft report by mid-January, end of January.
So you're saying that draft report mid-January?
Right.
Okay, mid-January.
End of January, I mean, we have to get the project done no later than April thirtieth, 'cause the money runs out.
Okay, and one last...
April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, have your project done, are we moving it?
No.
Or just the, the study?
The study, that study, that part of the study does...
Just making sure that people understand.
She is, no.
Yep, that's just a study.
Well, no, because there's a lot of information being out there in the community.
Yep.
Yes.
There is, you're right, no, I'm...
Last question is the...
It'd be many years before that happens.
Walkway? I'm on the committee, but I'll let you...
We have, we have a revised scope of work, which will be an amendment to the contract to have Dubois King further evaluate pedestrian issues at that location, and that was in response to DOT's recommendations, because the feasibility study has to look at all alternatives. And we have a proposal from Dubois King, we're reviewing that, fine tuning that, and we hope to be getting the town council to approve that. We're not sure what the cost will be yet. Again, we have to do an intergovernmental, excuse me, independent governmental estimate to ensure, again, that the costs are in line. So again, that's something that we're working on, that hopefully in the December or January meeting, we'll get something to the town council to move that forward.
And they're still questing for the additional funding?
Yes, but I...
You still hope that there is additional funding, but...
I'm not real optimistic.
You're not optimistic? Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
When you were referencing the bike path, was that the section that the voters had supported so far?
Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, there was a town meeting warrant.
So just to update, that particular section, it goes from New Fields Town Line to...
To basically Bennett Way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Was not the bridge into New Field taken out of it, wasn't it, stopping at Ashwam Road?
Yes.
Stops at Ashwam Road, I think.
Ashwam Road, yeah, thank you.
Right. All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion? Oh, there's a question.
No, just, they're going to pursue still an overhead walkway?
No one has, no decision has been made.
No, 'cause I was watching a town council meeting where it was, several councils were leaning up about not to do that at all.
Right, I know. We have a change in council.
No, I know, I mean, I mean, because the, part of the theory was, all these studies are costing so much money to the taxpayers, and like when Elizabeth questioned, what was the ten thousand dollars for, it just seems like we're going way many studies, and poor Diane is going way too many directions, and she's being pulled everywhere.
Well, to...
Maybe part of the budget process should be for the town council to maybe not pull Diane in so many directions.
Just to be clear, though, Janice...
Thank you for your concern, Janice.
The council a few years ago approved funding the town's portion of, of that walkway, and I believe it was a hundred thousand dollars, and that's what the town's commitment is capped at, at this point.
It's actually fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five thousand.
And then there's gonna be some additional money that could be available.
So as this, as this goes on, the town either, you know, the town's not gonna spend any more than fifty-five thousand dollars on it.
Well, so far.
So far, unless another council votes to spend more money for the study.
There will be additional...
Or the actual construction.
If we do this revised study, there will be the need for some additional funding...
Oh, okay.
That will have to be matched by the town.
Okay.
And by Mr. Chambers.
Okay.
That's the grant funding, that's five hundred or something thousand, isn't it?
It's, right.
Okay, is there an expiration date on that?
Well, that's a good question, because we had a meeting this summer with the Department of Transportation, and there's no longer a transportation enhancement program, it's basically going out of business, and all of the funds have to be committed by June two thousand fifteen. And so we have to get the engineering piece done by February two thousand fourteen to be able to meet the milestones that DOT has given to federal highways. DOT really doesn't want to give back the money to federal highways, so they're pushing the grantees to move forward expeditiously with the projects.
But if the grantee doesn't come up with the other additional money to support the project, it, the money goes back.
Yes, and the state, the state DOT will spend it on another project.
Not the money we've spent thus far, because we've spent that in good faith to do the study, but the balance, yes, we go back.
DOT will allocate that to a different project.